Let's go ahead and get started. I'd like to call the order, the regularly scheduled Beloit City Council meeting. It is now 7:05 on Monday, the May of 6th, 2013, here at 100 State Street, Beloit, Wisconsin. And do we have the roll call?
Roll call shows all councilors present.
Item number two is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, special orders of the day and announcements. We have four proclamation, or three proclamations and a recognition. Item 3A.
A proclamation declaring May 11th, 2013 as Teen Pregnancy Prevention Day.
Mr. Vice President.
Whereas the personal, social, and economic consequences of teenage pregnancy affect all local residents, and teenage pregnancy negatively affects the health, economic, and educational future of teenagers; and whereas despite progress over the last decade, nearly 3 in 10 teenagers in the United States become pregnant, the highest teen pregnancy rate among comparable countries; and whereas the roughly half of Latina and African-American teen girls become pregnant before the age of 20; and whereas children of teen mothers are more likely to be born prematurely and at a low birth weight; and whereas teen pregnancy is closely linked to a number of critical social issues such as poverty, educational attainment, involvement in the criminal justice and child welfare systems; and whereas a child is two times more likely to suffer abuse and neglect than would occur if their mothers had delayed childbearing; and whereas a child is nine times more likely to grow up in poverty if he or she is born to unmarried teen parents who have not yet completed high school; and whereas fewer than half of mothers who have children before they turn 18 ever graduate from high school; and less than 2% of mothers who have children before 18 have a college degree by age 30. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Beloit does hereby proclaim May 11th, 2013, as Teenage Pregnancy Prevention Day in our community to demonstrate our commitment to improving the quality of life. Presented the 6th day of May, 2013.
Thank you very much. My name's Lynn Jones. I'm the Employment and Training Director for Community Action. And on behalf of Community Action, I sincerely want to thank the council for this recognition. It is an opportunity on Saturday for us to increase awareness of teen pregnancies and to look at some of the preventive measures. So it's an education opportunity. We hope many of you, as well as the community at large, will come and support this event. We will begin at 9 o'clock down at Riverside Park at the pavilion. So we look forward to seeing you there. And again, thank you very much.
Item 3B.
A proclamation declaring May 12th through 18th, 2013 as National Police Week.
Whereas police services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives; and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of police services and programs, which are all guided by the police department's problem-solving philosophy; and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these programs, services, and employees providing them; and whereas sacrifices of present and past employees must be recognized; and whereas this week also recognizes the contributions to the community of K-9 Nick, who retires May 12th, and recognizes the contributions of his handler, Officer Brian Doherty. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Beloit does hereby proclaim May 12th through May 18th, 2013, as National Police Week in the City of Beloit, and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our police department and to recognize the contributions which these officers make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Dated the 6th day of May, 2013.
Well, on behalf of all the members of the Beloit Police Department, I'd like to thank the council members and the community for all its support throughout the year. We appreciate this recognition, and will continue to do the best job possible to make Beloit an even better place to live.
Thank you. Item 3C.
A proclamation declaring May 13th through 17th, 2013 as Bike-to-Work Week.
Whereas the bicycle is a viable and environmentally sound form of transportation and an excellent form of recreation; and whereas millions of Wisconsinites will experience the joys of bicycling during the month of May through educational programs, races, commuting events, charity events, or just getting riding; and whereas Wisconsin's natural beauty and bike paths draw in thousands of cross-country and local bicyclists each year; and whereas the City of Beloit encourages the use of bicycle transportation as an integral part of the multimodal transportation system planned for by the federal, state, regional, and local transportation government agencies; and whereas creating bicycle-friendly communities has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, and quality of life, to boost community spirit, to improve traffic safety, and to reduce pollution and congestion; and the City of Beloit encourages the increased use of the bicycle, benefiting all citizens of Beloit by improving air quality, reducing traffic noise, and decreasing the use of and dependence upon finite energy sources; and whereas bicycling activities and attractions have a positive impact on Wisconsin's economy and tourism industry, and to stimulate economic development by making the state attractive to businesses and citizens who enjoy the out-of-doors and healthy lifestyles; and whereas the League of American Bicyclists, the Wisconsin Bicycle Federation, local bicycle clubs, schools, parks, and leisure service departments, police departments, hospitals, companies, and civic groups throughout Wisconsin will be promoting bicycling during the month of May, 2013. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Beloit does hereby proclaim May 13th through 17th, 2013, as Bike-to-Work Week in recognition and promotion of bicycling as a leisure activity as well as an environmentally friendly alternative to the automobile. Presented the 6th day of May, 2013.
Thank you very much for the proclamation. A couple of years ago, Wisconsin was the second state, ranked second in the best bike destination in the whole United States. And according to the American League of Cyclists, now we're about sixth. So we're trying to do these events to make sure that we're the premier Wisconsin cycling destination again. And we know we have a great opportunity here in the Stateline area because we know the tourism brings in like, I guess, $535 million a year annually for bike-related activities. We have four or 500 bike-related activities in the annual section. And also, we have great county roads, we have great mountain biking roads, we have great scenery, as was illustrated in the proclamation. So there are probably 13,000 to 14,000 jobs related to cycling in Wisconsin right now. And it does bring in $1.5 billion in revenue annually. So we're just really happy that you've highlighted this with this proclamation, and hopefully you'll dust off those bikes. And if you didn't ride to work, maybe you'll ride to the library, or maybe to the grocery store, or maybe to our beautiful lagoon down there, or come in some of our club activities. Or you can follow Mr. Jeff Johnson here with his wife. They're probably the premier tandem couple in Wisconsin. So anyway, thank you for allowing us this time and dust off those bikes. And we'll see you on the trails, or we'll see you on the road. Thank you.
A recognition of the Parks and Leisure Services Division's designation as part of Travel Green Wisconsin.
I would invite Spencer Waite and Linda Ross to come up to the podium.
Would you like to share what our success in this?
Sure. Well, thank you for this recognition, obviously. Mr. Van de Bogart passed out pamphlets that Linda had received from Travel Green Wisconsin. It highlights, you know, the reasons why and the benefits of becoming Travel Green certified. And, you know, as being one of the largest employers in Beloit and the surrounding areas, it's, you know, kind of our responsibility to limit our environmental blueprint. And I think this is a good way that we can show the community and the state that we're trying to make those steps and continue to progress, continue on and, you know, make those efforts. Linda?
And I'm Linda Ross from the city of Beloit, and I just want to thank you for supporting tourism. Tourism in Rock County this past year was up over more than 6%. So we're doing very well, and we just thank you for your support.
Congratulations to those of you.
Okay, so we'll move on to item four, which is public hearing. It's item 4A.
A proposed ordinance amending the zoning district map of the City of Beloit to change the zoning district classification of the properties located at 1528 and 1532 Forest Avenue and 1533 West Grand Avenue from R-1B Single Family Residential District to PLI Public Lands and Institutions District. The Plan Commission recommended approval, six to zero.
Mrs. Christensen.
On April 15th, the City Council adopted an ordinance amending the future land use map of the city's conference and plan to recommend institutional and community services for these three properties. These three properties were formerly single-family houses. I saw they came down when I drove through there this weekend. So they're, right now, they're vacant lots. They're intended to be part of the expanded Gaston campus. On the site plan, as it stands right now, it's planned to be open space. And so it will allow that campus to have a little bit of grass, which it has not had. Had, my kids went there, and it was all asphalt or wood chips. So by purchasing these properties, the school district is able to expand the campus to give some actual open space on-site. Plan Commission did review it and voted unanimously to recommend approval of this rezoning to PLI for these three properties.
Thank you. I'd like to open the public hearing on item 4A. Does anyone wish to come forward and speak on item 4A? Second call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4A. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4A. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on item 4A. It looks like we have a recommendation for suspending the rules.
Move to suspend the rules and proceed to action on merits.
Moved by Van de Bogart and second by Levy. Has anybody wished to speak on suspending the rules? Hearing none, I'll call the item. All in favor of suspending the rules, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We've suspended the rules by a vote of seven to zero. Move, Levy moves for approval, and second by Loopkey. Do we have any questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Item passes seven-zero. And now we move on to item 4B.
A proposed ordinance amending the zoning district map of the City of Beloit to change the zoning district classification of the properties located at 1500 and 1505 Gateway Boulevard from R-3 Low Density Multi-Family Residential District to M-1 Limited Manufacturing District. The Plan Commission recommended for approval, six to zero.
Mrs. Christensen.
These two properties are located in the Gateway Business Park. They were rezoned R-3 a number of years ago, at the time when the two multifamily housing complexes happened out there, with the thought that there was going to be this bigger market for multifamily. Andrew Yonkey, the Economic Development Director, has indicated that the real demand that he's seeing out there through RFPs is for industrial development. So he requested that we rezone this to M-1. You did process a comprehensive plan amendment to allow the industrial classification. Plan Commission did review this on April 17th, and they voted unanimously to recommend approval of the rezoning to M-1.
Okay, thank you. I'll open the public hearing on item 4B. Does anyone wish to come forward and speak on item 4B? Second call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4B. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak on item 4B. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on item 4B. It looks like we also have a request to suspend the rules.
Motion.
Moved by Loopkey to suspend the rules, second by Spritezer. Do we have any questions on suspending the rules? Okay. Counselor DeForest.
My question about suspending the rules is related to the question I have about the noticing to the public, because the most clearly affected individuals are the residents, the tenants who live in the apartment buildings in close proximity. And I'm just wondering what was done to try to notify those residents about the zoning change. I know that our practice is to only mail to the actual property owners. And again, I continue to object to just limiting to that. Was there at least a zoning sign placed out on the property so that hopefully the tenants there could see that this was up for a zoning proposal change?
I don't think we placed the zoning sign. I honestly don't know for sure, one way or another. And within the proximity, I mean, who was notified? Was anybody within 150 feet? So the owners of Gateway Estates would have been notified. We wouldn't have had any way to individually notify the tenants. We don't know any of their names. We could have put a sign out there, but I don't think we did. I don't know if you went through there, if anybody went through there to see if there was a sign there. But I honestly don't know if Drew put the sign out or not. I can't speak to that.
I would request that if this is not a timely matter, if we could lay this matter over for two weeks, or not vote to suspend the rules, and put a sign out there to give the tenants an opportunity to at least visually see that this parcel of land is up for rezoning. So, thank you.
And I don't think there's a timeliness issue. I mean, I don't think Andrew has a prospect ready to go or anything. So I think it can wait two weeks, if the council so desires.
You have a question?
Yeah. Just a question, question for clarification. First is, if you notified the owners of where the tenants are, isn't it their responsibility to notify the tenants that this is something that just is going to be occurring? And I understand Counselor DeForest's concern, but I think we put the ownership on the owners of the property, like we do when we do rezoning any place else that goes to the owner of the property. And I think it's their responsibility to notify the tenants. My fear is, if we want to notify the tenants, if we try to make that effort, we don't have their names, how are we going to do it? Even if we put a sign out there, you still stand the risk of some of the tenants saying, "Well, we didn't see it. We didn't understand what you guys were doing." So I don't want to belabor this for too long. I don't mind laying it over for the two weeks. But I get, I don't want to get bogged down in trying to track down all the tenants. And I understand your concern, but tracking down all the tenants could be a difficult task. And even if you put a sign out there, some people may miss it. And even when you move forward, whether you still may, they still may say, "I didn't know anything about it." So I think we're going to face the risk any way we go. But I, for one, am comfortable if we notify the owners, because I truly believe that that's going to be the direct contact with the tenants.
Okay, and...
Do the owners have an obligation to notify their tenants?
I don't know if they have an obligation to notify their tenants.
I kind of suspect they don't.
I mean, we send a notice to the tenant, to the owner, because I think James and Lois Gunther are the ones that own Gateway Estates. And it's up to them what they choose to do with that notice.
And Sheila?
Yes, I guess I would just like to reiterate, I'd just like to see the city try to make a good faith effort to do what we can, you know, to put a sign out there at least visually. I know that we can't send a notice to all the tenants, but I would be very surprised if the property owners have gone out of their way to notify the tenants of this rezoning change. So I think a sign is at least an attempt on our part, a good faith effort to try to notify, because those are the people that are most directly affected in this case, just to give them the opportunity to maybe see that and approach us if they have an issue. So I would like to request that my colleagues vote against suspending the rules, please. Thank you.
And Mr. Vice President.
Since there's not a timeliness issue, I'm happy to lay this over for two weeks to do that. And I understand that we've put signs out before. But I think it might be helpful if we figured out what our standard practice is going to be regarding that, so that if this doesn't come up on a case-by-case basis, because it seems to come up regularly. And maybe we need to figure out, as a body, what it is that our expectations are on that, and then make that clear so that that can happen every time.
Yeah, and it is, it was done during one strategic planning cycle, didn't show up in the next plan, it's not in the ordinance, and it is, it is difficult at times. So in the winter, it's difficult. It's difficult if the sign's in the ground, and then the ground freezes, then it sits there all winter. And we have had signs stolen, just, I mean, those are the particular issues, just to come up with the sign. You know, there's always been, there are always people who will take signs. But, you know, we're happy to provide it. Like, right now, we should have no problem putting a sign in, hopefully in a place that people can see. I know in the gateway, it's tough sometimes. You've got big expanses of land, so sometimes they get lost. But we do have the sign, so we could do that if the council desires.
Well, I'll say, I prefer the sign go up. I don't, I don't know that it would have made a difference. I'm sure that the tenants don't know what the current zoning of that parcel is. They probably wouldn't know, wouldn't notice if we did put up the sign. But I'll leave that as it may. And Counselor Loopkey.
Julie, Mrs. Christensen, that area right now is primarily business. It's to the right of the road. There are no homes in that immediate area, right? I mean, it's all business. So it would be fitting in, it would inconvenience no homeowners. I see it as, you know, as contiguous, and, you know, I just wanted to make clarification there. There are no, no single-family units anywhere in that area. I mean, I go out there quite often and walk or bike, and it's just, it's basically vacant land right now.
Yeah, it's adjacent to, so this is, I don't know if Larry's got the map up, this is Gateway Estates here, and this is Hawks Ridge. So this piece is adjacent to this multifamily complex. These are the only homeowner-owned lots, would be right here. But there is multifamily residential immediately adjacent to 1500.
Thank you. Okay. So you have something else you want to say, Sheila?
I feel pretty strongly that we should respect tenants as much as we respect homeowners. They live there, they have their families there. So I just would like to make that comment. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions or comments on suspending the rules? We do have a motion and a second. All in favor of suspending the rules, say aye. Aye. That would be... And all opposed to suspending the rules?
Nay.
Can we take a roll call vote on this?
Okay, let's go ahead. So, all right, so...
So this is a motion to suspend the rules. It's been moved and seconded. An aye vote means that you will indeed suspend the rules and go on to a second reading for this at this meeting.
Sure.
I'll start with Counselor DeForest.
Nay.
Counselor Kincaid. Counselor Spritezer.
Nay.
Counselor Heinz.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Loopkey.
Aye.
Counselor Van de Bogart.
Nay.
The motion fails by a vote of three ayes to four nays.
Okay, so we have not suspended the rules, and so we have a motion to lay over. Motion seconded to lay over. Does anybody have any other questions or comments on it? All in favor of laying this over, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. So that would be myself and Counselor Loopkey opposed to laying this over. All right. And so we've laid that over on a vote of five to two. Okay. So we're now on to citizens' participation. We've reached the point on the agenda for citizens to speak to the council about issues that are coming before us or may come for us in the future. Council members may not act on any requests at this meeting, but may refer speakers to staff for assistance. We ask that you hold your comments three minutes or less, and refrain from public, personal attacks of any kind. We do have one person who said that they wish to come forward and speak under citizens' participation, Mr. Steve Vivian. Please approach the podium, state your name and address.
My name is Steve Vivian, 625 Roosevelt. The question I got is about the water hookups for City of Beloit to Town of Beloit. I guess Sheila over here mentioned about DNR requiring something. I don't know anything about that, but I was going to ask, are they going to consider it? Second question I got is whether this hookup is going to be in the future. And then the third question I have is about the fluoride being put in the water, and whether they should do away with it. I think it's a poison. It's, it really does, has no effect, and plus the cost factor, too. Maybe Sheila could bring up some points about it and answer the questions.
Oh, yeah, it sounds like these questions are more directed towards staff, and I will recommend that you get with the, the city manager will direct you to.
They'll refer these to Water Resources.
Water Resources.
Water Resource, okay.
I'm sorry, I missed your specific question about water connections. Specifically, what are you asking?
I'm asking, when is this going to be considered to be a hookup to Town of Beloit?
Well, we have public water service in the Town of Beloit now, sir.
I see.
They're part of the Beloit Utility System.
Oh, I see.
So the water is there. In terms of extending any water mains in the town, that's basically the responsibility of the town government to extend water mains as they get new development. They're responsible for doing that. As far as hooking up, if you have a water main in front of your home, you can do that at any time, if the water service is present on your particular block, and that'd be coordinated through Beloit Utilities.
I see.
You're welcome.
And what about the fluoride in the water? Consider not to put that in the water?
No, that's not under consideration, sir. That's a requirement in the state of Illinois, where we have a large wholesale customer, the entire, the entire city of South Beloit. And that's a legal requirement in Illinois, and it's a very highly recommended requirement for public health reasons nationwide. Virtually all major utilities add fluoride and chlorine to drinking water to make sure the bacteria and viruses that get into that water are properly killed.
If you had no fluoride, what would be the effect?
The public would be at risk if the fluoride were removed from the water. You'd be at risk of, first of all, a lot of it has to do with tooth health and tooth decay, and also the fluoride acts along with chlorine to make sure that bacteria and viruses are, may be in that water from any source, wherever it may have come from, are all killed before that water goes into the public utility. So I'm not aware of any major water utility in the country that is not adding both chlorine and fluoride to its public water supply.
There's a few in the western part of the United States don't do that, but, see, everybody thinks fluoride is good for your tooth, but osteoporosis is, from female's point of view, does exist. And what does it do? That's right, it eats away at the bone.
Sure.
I hear it all the time. Fluide consideration is that...
We appreciate your opinion.
Okay, city manager and Mr. Vivian, this is not a time for debate.
Okay. All right, I was just bringing up that point that I've heard a lot of stories about people that live in a farm, they have their own wells, they don't use fluoride, and like, if you're 34 years old, no, no teeth decay. 42 years old, no teeth decay. So I think it's false.
Okay, so we need for you to go ahead and contact Water Resources.
Okay, Water Resources.
Questions answered, and then, you know, and you can have that discussion with them.
All right, I'll ask them about it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do we have any other persons wishing to come forward and speak under citizens' participation? Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak under citizens' participation. Seeing none, I will close the citizens' participation section and move to the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member's sole request, which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point in the agenda. Does anyone wish anything removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, the consent agenda consists of items 6A through 6E. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Moved by Loopkey, second by Levy. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is passed, seven-zero. Item seven is the, are the ordinances, we have none. Item eight... We have none. Item eight, appointments. The, this, normally at this point, I would offer up the, any, the number of appointments for boards and commissions for the council. This year, we have a very status quo situation. The only change in appointments will be on the Community Development Authority. Counselor Levy will be replaced by Counselor Vanda Bogart. Other than that, all will remain as they are. Item nine, councilor activities and upcoming events. I think we'll start with Counselor DeForest.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, in taking advantage of the opportunity where we're recognizing promoting biking to work week, I just wanted to share that I had a great meet with the owner of the Bicycle Company, a new store that's downtown where paddle and trail used to be. And stopped in, and they have a great selection of bikes, real reasonable rates on bike repairs, and so, hope that that resource will become available to our residents to check out, stop by, and I want to encourage biking as well. Still have my longstanding challenge to Counselor Levy to get out there on the bike with me, so. And then also, I just wanted to share my appreciation to the Parks and Recreation and Conservation Commission and our Parks and Recreation staff for the excellent work in seeing the dog park come to fruition. I was pleased to be able to attend the dedication of the City of Beloit Dog Park, and despite the downpour, it didn't dampen our spirits of excitement for having that wonderful amenity for the residents of Beloit and their animals. So, again, wanted to really thank the staff for doing a wonderful job, and so pleased that once again, an initiative that came forward from the residents where they were vocalizing to us that we were in desperate need of a dog park, and we heard them, and they worked with us in the development of it through an ad hoc committee that visited other dog parks and helped to design and develop it. And so, I'm quite proud of, again, a resident-driven initiative that has made Beloit a better place to live. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Vanda Bogart?
Among other activities, I had a chance this morning to participate out at the Visitor Center on 9039 with the local kickoff of the National Tourism Week. We had our own Stephanie Klett, the Secretary of the Department of Tourism there, along with Monica Stopa, the new director at Visit Beloit. Larry Arf was there, along with Beth Jacobson, and a number of other dignitaries and individuals involved in tourism in our community. Needless to say, it's already been referred to. Tourism has a tremendous impact financially on our community, and I would encourage people to get out and take advantage of what Visit Beloit and local people are offering, not only this week but all summer. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Kincaid?
The, I didn't ride my bike to work today with the city council, but I hope maybe I challenge all the councilors to do it maybe next time.
All right, I'm up. Counselor Levy, are you in?
It's, you know, spring was sometime in March, but I think most of us have figured out that it's here in abundance with the talk about biking and some are doing it. The Bloom event was just, again, wonderful this year with the, we know it's really spring when the, when the city puts that on. Farmer's Market, what was really the surprise there was that, as I was leaving, the Public Works employees with some of their equipment was on the parking lot and giving handouts to people as they left. And I can tell you that they really represented Public Works very well. I understand this is going to be done every month, and I think it's a great idea, and I appreciate their, their time spent all morning doing that. That's all I have today.
Thanks. Counselor Lupke?
I also was with you, our council president, and Counselor DeForest Davis at the rain-held, Who Let the Dogs Out on Saturday morning, and it was, it was very nice to see the people there. And I want to thank Counselor DeForest Davis for her leadership in getting that dog park there. Very nice, and the people really appreciate it. I just handed a note from Counselor Vandy Bogart that on the 18th, there'll be the, I think, the 25th biathlon held at the Beloit Hospital. And this is really neat. It brings a lot of people to Beloit, and it showcases Beloit again like the triathlon a month later. So, if anybody would like to volunteer to help with that and just, and see this event, you can give Dr. Larry Bergen a call at Beloit Hospital. And lastly, we had a nice proclamation a couple weeks ago for our, Beloit's very own son, Tony Scodwell, class of 1961 from Beloit Memorial, who's played with everybody from Sinatra to Streisand to Elvis Presley. He came back to Beloit for a full week as the Vic Farrell artist-in-residence at Beloit College. And he would lecture in classes during the day, and then at night, he would put on concerts. And on Wednesday night, I was fortunate enough to give a proclamation from City Manager Arf that proclaimed the week, Tony Scodwell Week. And when he got this, he just held it for a while, and this was at the Eaton Chapel, and he made the statement after he composed himself that this is probably the most important thing that ever happened to him. And he reflected on being from Beloit, going to Berkeley School of Music in Boston, being trained, and spending his life on the road for the last 45, 50 years, and to come home to this acclaim. And he was really touched by it. So, I want to thank other councilors for doing this. And for anybody who was there during the week at any of his concerts, it was just a wonderful thing, again, showcasing Beloit and the talent in Beloit. That's all.
Thanks. Mr. Vice President?
Well, I also had a chance to attend the concert with Tony Scodwell where the proclamation was presented, and Counselor Lupke's certainly not exaggerating about the response to that. I also had a chance to present the Arbor Day proclamation at Robinson Elementary for their Arbor Day program, and it was great to see all the kids out and had a beautiful day for that. I'm looking forward to Art Walk this weekend, both Friday and Saturday downtown, a great annual event, so be sure to get out and check that out. And Beloit College is celebrating its commencement this Sunday for the class of 2013, and I'll be looking forward to attending that and celebrating all of the new graduates.
Thank you. Counselor Levy?
I almost didn't have anything, but since everyone was challenging me on this bike thing, I'm comfortable in my little five, six-block radius. Yeah, I did some research. Now, if I ride from my house down here, I don't know how to get back there without any steep hills.
Three.
So, I mean, you know, if I lived closer, you know, maybe.
You've got train wheels, though.
Yeah, I got train wheels. But then the other reason why we, I can't do that because I don't want to get a ticket for parking in the city parking lot without the little flag that we hang on our rearview mirror. So, get those things worked out, I'm in.
All right, well, I, as has been mentioned, I said a few words at the dog park opening in spite of being horribly jet-lagged, having flown back in from visiting family that evening before. I think, I don't own a tricycle, and that's the only way, that's the only pedal device that I can stay up on. So, I think I'll have to pass on that, but my wife does bike to work every day, and she does it enough for both of us. So, I'll leave that alone and let that go. Possibly, but I, but I might knock her over. So, anyway, so, all right, we'll conclude that. And, let's see, item 10, city manager's presentation, there is none. Item 11, then, boards, reports from boards and city officers. We're going to mix this up, but we're going to start with item 11B today. Mr. York?
Thank you, Mr. President. If you don't mind, I'd like to include items 11B through G in the staff report this evening since all these items are related to one another. Before you this evening, you have a number of resolutions for the issuance of general obligation bonds and revenue bonds, and also some refunding bonds, as well as a state trust fund loan. To sort of summarize what we're doing here, about $3.7 million of the money that we plan to borrow this year are for our 2013 capital improvement projects. They're included in the city's capital budget for this year. And that's included in the $7,890,000 general obligation bond issue that's before you this evening for authorization. And also included in that issue are a number of refunding bond issues to refund some debt the city issued back in 2009 and 2010 under the federal Build America Bond Program. And we'll get into a little bit more detail as to why those are being considered for refunding at this time. With us this evening is Mike Harrigan with Ellers and Associates. They're the city's financial advisor, and Mike will go through the more details of the proposed bond issuance here. And also, to be considered as a revenue issue from the city's stormwater fund, again, these were issued back in 2010 as part of the same Build America Bond Program, which Mike will explain. And finally, we have a fairly small state trust fund loan, and again, these are, this is to fund some of our projects in our capital improvement program this year for uses that do not qualify for general obligation bond financing. We've used the state trust fund in the past for those smaller projects that aren't included in our general obligation bond issue. And with that, it's my pleasure this evening to introduce Mike Harrigan with Ellers and Associates. And Mike, again, will step you through the details of our financing plans here. Mike?
Thank you, Paul. Mr. President, before I begin, let me say I am very impressed with your new video and audio system here. It is really quite impressive and much improved, I think, for your audience and yourselves as well. You can see what's going on. So, that's, that's great. I am here tonight, though, to talk a little bit about what these borrowings are all about. And to add to Paul's commentary, he did a nice job of summarizing it. On your agenda, you have several resolutions that all relate to a single borrowing. Contemplated is the issuance of $7,890,000 in general obligation corporate purpose bonds. Within that issue, as Paul mentioned, you've got new money involved to fund your capital projects, but the balance of that is all really for the refinancing of two state trust fund loans as well as a general obligation issue that was issued under the auspices of what we refer to as the Build America Bond Program here back in 2010. The program, I'm going to talk about the refinancings a little bit first because they constitute the bulk of this particular issue. This particular program was set up by the government to provide an opportunity to stimulate new development in the country at the time, at a time when there was very little activity. In order to do that, there was a write-down of the interest expense from what you had to otherwise pay on these bonds. And so, this is true of a borrowing that was done specifically for new projects within that issue. It was a over $4 million issue at the time, 4.16 million. And then there were the two state trust fund loans. The federal government is, has been reimbursing you between 35% and 45% of the interest expense on those bonds, but because the Congress has been unable to resolve the budget impasse, there has been a event that is referred to generally as sequestration. And what that really amounts to is that the government has cut back on all federal programs to the tune of about a little over 8%, about 8.7% of every program has been reduced. Therefore, your reimbursement payments have been similarly reduced. When we did the original borrowing on this for you, one of the provisions that was included at the time was something called an extraordinary call feature, which would allow you to refinance these bonds if you were ever not reimbursed your full amount. That has now occurred. With your April payment, you were short, we understand, in the neighborhood of about $12,000 on that reimbursement payment. Well, the, the fact is that interest rates today are a lot lower than where they were at the time that you did these original bonds. And so, that creates an opportunity for you not only to get out from under the, the possibility of further reductions in your reimbursement payment, but also potentially to save dollars even over and above what you would've gotten had you gotten your full reimbursement payment. And so, we've provided projections to the city that reflect that, notwithstanding reimbursement payment, if you were to refinance these three issues that I referred to, you could save a little over $41,000 net of all expenses on the, on the refunding issue. So, we had recommended that you consider that along with the new money issue that you're contemplating right now. So, if you approve the initial resolutions that are before you, you do have to approve separate resolutions, number one, for the street improvements that are part of the $7 million issue, that's $2,815. For the park improvements, that's $275,000. The refunding of the three issues that I mentioned is $4,800,000. And then, a final resolution is $7,890, which is consolidating them all together if you approve the first three resolutions. So, maybe I'll pause at this point and see if there are questions on that particular set of resolutions before I comment on the final one.
I think that's reasonable. We'll go ahead and open, open the floor discussions at this point. All right, on, on all of these items. Counselor Lupke?
Mike, I think it's just important for the public to know when, like, when you refinance a home, you get a lower rate, but there are fees and other things put in. But it's, I'd just like you to reiterate the fact that, that $41,000 is, after everything, is all the other fees and expenses are met by, by you.
Correct. The fees that you incur whenever you do a refinancing include our fee as your financial advisor, your bond attorney, the rating agency, and then there's also a paying agency involved here. So, those fees are there, but the $40,000 that I mentioned are after you've paid all those costs.
That's the good news.
So, that's, that's net savings to you.
Thank you.
Counselor Vanda Bogart?
And isn't that, that figure also contingent on an expectation that already hasn't been met, and that is the government, the federal government paying at the original rate that they agreed to. They've already demonstrated they're not going to, so we're going to save more than that 41.
Correct.
All right. And the second question, and I'm not sure if it's addressed properly to you, Mr. Harrigan, or perhaps Mr. York, or maybe even Mr. Arf, how do we come up with the figure for new borrowing of 2.8 million for street improvement projects when our need is far greater than that? We hear from residents on various streets, in various neighborhoods, saying, fix this, it's horrible. And the answer we give them, we don't have enough money. And I understand we have a prioritization process, but, but how do we come up with 2.8 million, and why do we stop at that point? Why isn't it 3.8, or why isn't it 1.8?
Yeah, I suppose I should answer that, Mr. President. First of all, the city each year in its annual budgeting produces both a capital and an operating budget. The capital budget includes all the major projects like street infrastructure, park infrastructure, major equipment purchases, bridge, we're still paying costs related to the Hendrix Bridge project, all the major capital spending on infrastructure, buildings, facilities that the city has in a given year. Now, obviously, council has a good deal of discretion in terms of how much money you want to spend, but one of the main controlling factors is the geo-debt capacity. That's how much money we have available under our general borrowing authority to raise capital to pay for those projects. As council is aware, the statutory debt limit is 5%. This particular bond in our, in the city policy... This particular bond and the city policy is 3.5%. And so, when we prepare the budget each year, we project how much capacity we're going to have to stay under that 3.5% of our equalized assessed valuation. And actually, if you look through the report, our final equalized assessment numbers from the state were a little bit lower than we anticipated when we did the budget, and we're going to be, instead of 3.5, somewhere around 3.7% of our total debt capacity. So, we're actually slightly over the policy limit, and that'll come down, obviously, in a year or two as we pay off other debt, because we pay off more each year than we issue. So, the city's total debt should be trending down now over time. So, that's the short and quick answer. There's a limitation on how much assets are available. And of course, the capital budget isn't just bond proceeds. We have grants, we have other sources of revenue that come into that project from utility funds if they're free to cover utility-related expenses, and so there are other sources of revenue as well. And that's why the total capital budget is always considerably larger than the bond issue amount for that particular year.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions or comments at this moment? Okay. And do you have anything else that you'd like to?
Yes, I would like to finish with a brief explanation of the remaining resolution, which is item 11F on your agenda. That is related to the stormwater revenue bond refinancing, and the amount of $1,375,000 is the resolution amount. This is a separate issue. The borrowing that I referred to earlier is one that would come back before you on your regular meeting of May 20th. If you approve these resolutions, it will come back before you for that. This resolution is separate because it's a different form of security. It's relying on the revenues from your stormwater utility. This also is refinancing a Build America Bond from 2010. We have projected that the savings here to you, again, assuming you did get full repayment from the federal government, would be a little over $30,000 over the life of the issue. So, still a good benefit to the city, and that is, again, net of all issuance expenses. In this particular resolution's case, we have set forth parameters because it's strictly a refunding issue. And because it is a revenue bond issue, we're having it sell two days after the issue that we just previously discussed. This is because of the number of other sales that are in the market on the day that we otherwise would be here. So, the resolution sets forth parameters that the council would expect be met from bidders, and that the main parameter is that you realize a savings that is at least equal or greater than the cost that you're paying now based on the Build America Bond issue. If that were to be realized, then the village manager would have the authority to approve that on the, excuse me, the city manager would have the ability to prove that on the 22nd of May. So, again, if there are questions on this one, I can answer those for you as well.
Any additional questions? All right. Hearing none at this moment.
Thank you.
Do you do those on separate?
Yeah. What I'll do is read the resolution title, and then we can get a motion in a second, and then we'll do a roll call vote.
Exactly. Okay, then. So, Counselor Lubke, would you prefer to make your motion on 11B?
Yes.
Okay.
Side of the.
Moved by Lubke and second by Vanda Bogart.
I'll actually read the resolution title for the record. Okay. An initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $2,815,000 for street improvement projects. And we have a motion by Lubke.
And second by Vanda Bogart.
Okay. Counselor DeForest, we'll start with you. Counselor Kincaid.
Aye.
Spritzer.
Aye.
Haynes.
Aye.
Levy.
Aye.
Lubke.
Aye.
Vanda Bogart.
Aye.
That carries seven to zero.
Item 11C, then.
An initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $275,000 for park and public grounds projects.
Move.
Moved by Levy, second by Lubke.
Roll call, starting with Counselor DeForest.
Aye.
Kincaid.
Aye.
Spritzer.
Aye.
Haynes.
Aye.
Levy.
Aye.
Lubke.
Aye.
Vanda Bogart.
Item 11D.
An initial resolution authorizing not to exceed $4,800,000 in general obligation refunding bonds.
Rule.
Moved by Levy.
Second.
Second by Kincaid.
Counselor DeForest.
Aye.
Counselor Kincaid.
Aye.
Counselor Spritzer.
Aye.
Counselor Haynes.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Lubke.
Aye.
Counselor Vanda Bogart.
Aye.
All right, item 11F.
I believe we're on E.
Did we miss E? Okay, 11E, then.
A resolution directing publication of notice to electors relating to bond issues and providing for the sale of not to exceed $7,890,000 in general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series 2013D.
Move approval.
Moved by Spritzer, second by DeForest.
Counselor DeForest.
Aye.
Counselor Kincaid.
Aye.
Counselor Spritzer.
Aye.
Counselor Haynes.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Lubke.
Aye.
Counselor Vanda Bogart.
All right, now we'll do 11F.
A resolution authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed $1,375,000 in storm sewer system revenue refunding bonds, Series 2013E, of the city of Beloit, Rock County, Wisconsin, and providing for the payment of the bonds and other details with respect to the bonds.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved by Levy, second by Spritzer.
Counselor DeForest.
Aye.
Counselor Kincaid.
Aye.
Counselor Spritzer.
Aye.
Counselor Haynes.
Aye.
Counselor Levy.
Aye.
Counselor Lubke.
Aye.
Counselor Vanda Bogart.
Then item 11G.
A resolution authorizing the application and borrowing of up to $677,100 from the State of Wisconsin Board of Commissioners of Public Lands State Trust Fund Loan Program for projects contained in the 2013 capital improvements budget.
Move approval.
Moved by Spritzer. Second by DeForest.
Counselor DeForest.
Aye.
Kincaid.
Aye.
Spritzer.
Aye.
Haynes.
Aye.
Levy.
Aye.
Lubke.
Aye.
Vanda Bogart.
Aye.
And all of those pass seven to zero.
Excellent. Now, we'll go back and pick up 11A, then.
A resolution approving amendments to the city of Beloit's housing rehabilitation revolving loan program.
Mrs. Christensen.
Over the last several years, we have brought to you a couple of what we thought were temporary fixes when Tom Clippert was here to try to get more interest in the loan program, get more installment loans, what we call it, fewer deferred. They haven't been that successful, to be honest, with property values dropping. There needed to be broader program-wide changes done, with the goal being to improve our neighborhoods, goal also being to bring money into the program, you know, to get houses fixed up, but also for the city to continue to bring that money back in to loan and back out. So, Kristi Harrison, who is our rehab financial specialist, has been with the city for, well, as long as I've been here, since before '99, I don't know how many years she's been here, and Terry Downey, the Director of Community and Housing Services, who came to the city, well, came back to the city with lending experience. So, we, those two got together and came up with some ideas for your consideration tonight to try to bring the loan program along. And I apologize, I'm using the wrong side, is that what I'm doing, for the amount of text on here. I did actually take a lot more text and divide it out. I sat down here Friday afternoon with the laptop going, "I think I can read that." Okay, so, to start off, the homeowner, we have a number of homeowner loan programs, the first being the deferred loan program. We're showing what the current loan product, how it works, which is you have to be under 50% of the county median income, have total combined debt over 40%, including the loan payment, and then it's deferred until you can afford to make payments or until the property is transferred or sold. We have a lot of those loans, and as a result, the money doesn't come back in. It is subject to annual review, seeing if their income has changed. The change we're proposing here is essentially the total combined debt must be under 60%. I think with the feeling being, and Terry will correct me if I misspeak, that if you get somebody in here who has way more debt, I mean, there was no cap on the debt, so it had to be over 40, but there was no maximum. So, now, we're saying that the total combined debt has to be under 60. So, we're trying to provide even deferred loans to those who are capable of managing that kind of a debt, even if it is deferred. And then, if their income does increase, they do become payable loans or repayable And the second type of loan product is the installment loans. This is a typical, you know, repayable. Currently, your household income must be between 51% and 80% of the county median income, total combined debt under 40%, including the loan payment. It's a 3% amortization period up to 15 years. Again, we're talking about setting a total combined debt, having that be under 60. It would still be repayable, it would still be at 3%. And then, distressed loans, these are the loans that I think Sheila thinks of different times where we have people who don't necessarily, you know, there's an emergent issue, so it's a code violation. We do hand our brochures out to people as part of code orders. And what we're adding here, I mean, essentially, their income must be under 80%. They have existing code violations, they're eligible up to $7,500 to address ordered items. How this changes is that they must be able to afford a minimum $50 payment or have sufficient equity to secure the loan. We recognize that there's a need out there, but we also don't want to just throw good money after bad on properties. I mean, what, if you look at the write-offs for our loans the last couple of years, they were all foreclosures, either tax foreclosures or bank foreclosures. So, we're trying to put standards in place so that we are giving out to people in need, but at the same time, we're being a little more careful with that money. And then, there's a new loan being proposed, which is a combination deferred installment loan, so they must be under 80% county median income, and that is driven by the grant, by the funding source. So, it's CDBG and home money, and that's required. To have housing debt, including loan payment, less than 40%, total combined debt under 60, and then they must have the ability to make a minimum $50 payment, and the remaining amount can be deferred. And they could pay more than 50, depending on what their capability is to pay. So, those are the homeowner loan programs. Did you want to ask any questions, or do you want me to just move forward through all of them?
Do you want to ask a question now?
Okay.
All right, let's start with Counselor Spritzer.
On the ones that refer to the ability to pay, including this one, what would determine whether they could go above 50? What's your scale on that, based on?
Terry, do you know how it's determined, how much they can pay?
Yes. Lending, not my expertise. The determination of how much they can pay is based on their housing debt, total housing debt. So, we take their principal interest taxes, insurance, any others, if they have a second mortgage, and we take that against their monthly income, and they have to be 40% or under. So, if they go over that 40%, then they can't afford a payment.
And if they're, depending on how much they're under, they could go above the $50 payment?
Yes. So, if their housing debt only equals 20% of their monthly income, then they could repay 20%. You figure out the difference of what they could pay to make it up to 40%, and you amortize that over a 15-year period, and you take that as the repayment portion of the loan, and you can, we can defer the rest of it.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Thank you.
What is the present CMI?
Depends on household size.
It varies based on household size. So, there's a whole table that has, starts around $13,000 for a one-person household, which is at the 0 to 30%. I mean, that's how that goes. There's a whole table that HUD puts together.
Another question, then. If there is a typical loan amount, these are all, for the most part, homes that are the bottom 20% of?
$15,000.
$15,000?
$15,000.
Between 10 and 15.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor DeForest.
Oh, I have the same question, and I have, I'll need Counselor Spritzer.
Okay, so, okay. Counselor Vanda Bogart.
How many of these loans are outstanding right now? How many are in default, or if there is such a concept with these deferrals? But how are we doing? How many are there?
I didn't bring the number with me of how many are defaulted or foreclosed upon. I do have the number that are currently deferred, open loans. We have 213 deferred loans for a total of $3,977,900. And we currently have 81 installment loans for an amount of $1,248,000. So, about one-third of our total open loans are installments, and about two-thirds of that is deferment.
Thank you.
And the installments are what? That CDBG budget, that's that program income at budget time. So, getting more money in the program income side would allow us to take less of our new grant dollars. You know, it'd be nice if, this program once paid for itself. In the '90s, there was tons of rental rehab money. Like, there were times we applied for $600,000 to $800,000 of rental rehab, plus we had more CDBG. And when I started in '99, we revolved about $500,000 in loan, you know, just program income for the housing rehab, and we never had to put new grant dollars into it. And that's really where we're trying to get to, so that the new grant dollars can go towards the local service agencies and the new programs, and that we could just, it could pay for itself completely, which it hasn't in the last several years. So, that's really kind of where we're heading. And it's really driven by these deferred loans, that we have so many deferred loans.
Will the number of loans under the proposed program be approximately what they are presently?
We're hoping by the changes we're making that, because there's some further underwriting changes that are coming later in the presentation, that we will actually get more people qualified. Because part of what is driving this not getting a lot of these loans is, has to do with the fact that the value's dropped. And so, they can't meet the standard, the equity standard, basically. So, we're trying to make some changes in that regard.
So, we've been, we're making loans to those who wouldn't normally make the cut for a market rate loan, and also those who are really in trouble. And those are the ones that you'll be, won't be, generally won't become eligible for loans now?
The real bottom of the market, we won't be serving. I think we'll be serving the middle that we haven't been serving right now.
Okay. So, those that we're serving right now, would they be shifting into rental homes?
I honestly don't know.
I mean, where are they going to go if they can't get a loan?
I don't know.
No answer to that question?
No. I don't know, Terry's got a thought.
Well, I think we'll still be helping the very low-income people. What we're trying to do is tighten up the requirements enough so we don't have so many defaults and foreclosures. So, that way, we're not losing that money. But we're going to, we'll be expanding the number of people that we can help. I think we're helping the very low-income and maybe the ones that are a little higher, but the middle is what we're missing. And we have a number of those people who come in that can't qualify because of the equity issue, or because just simply being over that 40%, they can't qualify for a loan, and they can't qualify for deferment. So, then we have to turn them away.
Thank you. Counselor Spritzer.
So, we're essentially tightening- So we're essentially tightening the restrictions on the income side, but loosening the restrictions on the equity side?
We're not really changing the income restrictions. Income restrictions are the same. We're changing the debt restrictions.
Okay.
And then there's other changes as well on future slides of once we get past the loan types that you will see.
Thank you.
If you haven't already looked at the PowerPoint at a time.
Okay, then, I think we're at a point where you can go ahead and proceed.
How do I get this back up here, Larry? Do I just advance or do I? It's up, Larry. Okay, so this is the actual underwriting guidelines for the, which I probably just should have went through this before. I was thinking I had rental loans before that. So Terry may have to help me out on this, but essentially, right now, it shows our combined loan-to-value current policy is 95% for deferred, 100% for installment, and there's no requirements at all for distressed. So what we're proposing is to increase those for deferred to 100%, for installment to 110%. Still not having a requirement for distressed. And then for the combo loan, having 105%. With my understanding, not being a lender, that this really deals with that equity issue.
Correct.
So we're able to lend more to, to more people as a result. And on the debt ratio, we had already discussed the 40 in the other slides that we would, total debt could not exceed 60%, that that would be that change. And then on the credit side, currently, if you file for bankruptcy, it had to be discharged. So if it was discharged today, you could come in tomorrow for a loan. What we're asked, what we're requesting is that it have to be discharged for a year so we can get a sense of what their payments have been, how they've done in that year since the bankruptcy. So we can make a determination on the credit side, which we couldn't do under current policy. There's currently no limitation on delinquent payments, except delinquent property taxes and unpaid judgments. We would also like them to be current on our water utility and then current on housing payments in the last six months. That's what that means. And then the collections, right now, they have to be manageable and actively paying. We want to put limits, saying that the medical cannot exceed 2,500 and non-medical cannot And then currently, it's required in our manual that they have to bring the entire property up to code. We would like to lower that standard. Terry can speak better to all these levels, but for the deferred payment loans, that they only have to address the necessity items. So instead of requiring complete compliance with all the plumbing, all the electrical, because you have a roof that's leaking, you could literally just do the roof that's leaking. Because what happens is then Bob, our construction person, goes out and does all the specs. And instead of it being, you know, a $5,000 loan, it's now a $15,000 loan because we have to meet those guidelines. And this is a property that has code orders. So that's, that would allow us that flexibility. That standard is not a HUD standard for CDBG. For CDBG, it's always been, because that's in our manual and that's what we chose to do. Janesville follows a standard like this. Terry was in touch with Janesville. And so we're making it difficult for people who have code orders and are of need. Not that we're, I mean, we're trying to address a problem where you have people who don't have enough funds to fix their roof. They've got orders. We're ticketing them and there's no way for them to actually come up with the resources. And this would allow them to do that. And that's just on the rental programs. So I don't know if you want to discuss any, add any, ask any questions on the homeowner loans on these underwriting guidelines?
Counselor DeForest?
First of all, I love the idea of the leveling. So thank you for that. I think that's very helpful and so fantastic idea. I wanted to ask about the limits on collections. Those collection totals seem a little restrictive. I mean, do we think we're going to lose some people? I mean, do we feel like we need that level threshold to really protect ourselves? Those seem pretty low.
They, they're along the lines, they're a little higher than what the lenders are requiring right now. So we did go above what the lenders are requiring. We're trying to address the number of defaults and late payments that we're having. What Christie does is she, if she meets with them and they have, you know, she pulls a credit report and she sees something's wrong, she does coach them to see if they can, well, you know, tell them what they need to do in order to qualify. The other thing is with higher medical bills, they're attaching them to the properties now. So, you know, we're already, we might be in second or third lien position. And then if they have a huge medical bill, you know, they can put a judgment on, or they can put a lien against the property. So we're trying to be mindful of that. And also, you know, making sure that people, you know, can afford a payment and can afford their bills so they're not, you know, ending up in foreclosure.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Spritzer?
Help me understand the housing payments, zero by 30 in the last six months. What's the zero by 30?
Zero by 30 means no late payments and, no payments more than 30 days late in the last six months.
Thank you.
Just to stand here?
Counselor Lukey.
Okay.
I just want to say this, I'm having served on the CDA with you for the last year or so, and along with this document, I can think of one thing and that's.
Is microphone not on?
Responsibility that we're impacting on our population, we're not denying anybody, we're expanding it basically to the middle that we're missing, but we're, we're putting that responsibility back on the people who can gain from this and have better properties and not shirk their responsibilities. So thank you. I like what I see here.
Any other questions or comments on this portion?
So the current program works, it's through, there are no deferred rental loans. So this is for the landlord, this is loans for landlords on their rental properties. The interest rate is 3%. The amortization period is 10 years. Combined loan-to-value is 100% of assessed value. And the interior and exterior code items are addressed as a whole package. What we're proposing is to leave the interest rate alone, to have a sliding amortization period that goes along with the sliding combined loan-to-value. So it would be five, eight, or 10 years, 125%, 120%, and 100%. And in terms of the rehab, if they had passed a systematic inspection within the last 12 months, they could address only exterior items only. And I think, and Terry and Christie both met with the landlords and kind of walked through this. When you did make the temperature change a couple of years ago to allow more rental loans, we didn't get more rental loans, which told us that there was something that wasn't quite right. And I know that we've always been asked, why are we concerned about the landlords? Well, one, those houses are in our neighborhoods and we want those houses to be upgraded. The landlords were hit by the same standard the homeowners were hit by, which is that their values went down and so they have equity issue trying to even get private financing with the bank. And these are installment loans. It was what built that program income up in the 90s was the repayable landlord loans because they paid them back and the money was there to lend out again. So we feel it's important to also have this loan product be marketable and used by the landlords because we want our, our residents who rent also to be in nice places. We don't, I mean, we want them to have options too, to have nicer housing without having to go rent one of the new units out at Hawks Ridge or something like that. And then, so those are just the standards. So I don't know if you have any questions on the underwriting for the rental?
Go ahead. Have you had defaults from landlords?
I, Terry, do you know? We just don't have the defaults as much with them.
I would think not. So they, they would really qualify for, with their balance sheet, they should qualify?
Yeah, and their tenants have to be, meet the income standards. So there's tenant requirements. So they have to rent to that, you know, 80% below CMI. And we document that. But it does give them, you know, 3% money to improve their units.
But they have to bring a balance sheet to the?
They have to do, I mean, all of these require their normal lending kind of program you go through. I mean, we don't just give you the money. There's, you know, all the normal lending stuff that Christie goes through. So they, you know, we pull credit, we look at, you know, everything for them as well. Make sure they're paying their taxes and their city of light utilities and all that Although they should all be current because they have rental permits, so.
Counselor Spritzer?
The requirement of the tenant income for the landlord loans, is that just at the moment the loan is made or does there have to be a certain history of that or does that have to continue a certain amount into the future?
I believe it has to continue, does it have to, for three years? Yeah, but for CDBG, I think it's, there's affordable, there's an affordability period for home. So depending on the type of loan, the amount of the loan, it steps up from five years to 25, depending on how much money's in it. And then that actually has to be maintained during that time period. Now, CDBG has less of affordability period. You set it, you decide how long that is. I want to say ours is three to five years.
Thank you.
Counselor DeForest?
Yes, thank you for making the effort in presenting these changes, suggested changes to the Landlord Association. Thank you for that. I just wanted to check with you, did they seem pleased with what we've come up with here in terms of feedback from them?
I wasn't in the meeting, so you can.
Christie and I met with three members from the Landlord Association, Bloay Property Managers Association. And we did discuss these ideas and they really liked the ideas.
Wonderful.
We didn't present the final package to them because it was exactly what we talked about.
Okay, great. Thank you for going the extra mile.
Okay. Any further things there?
And then the, right now, the, there's a rule that says that CDBG loans must be, that 75% of them must be homeowners for homeowners and 25% for landlords. We would like to change that so that half of the money can be used while CDBG and home can be used, 50-50 split homeowner and rental loans. Just trying to get that money back in the program. We haven't done a lot of rental loans over the last 10-plus years. And so we'd like to just kind of have that split be even. I did talk to Christie about why that split occurred. That split occurred in the 90s. And it was because at that time, we were getting between 610, $600,000 and $800,000 in rental rehab money. At that time, we were in a consortium for home. So we, that money was just first-time home buyers, because that's how the state set it. And so the council felt it was important that that CDBG be available for homeowners. They just felt that given that there was all this rental money coming from the state, that having some dedicated money was important. Where now, it's kind of all one big pot. And there isn't special rental money anymore. That program went away a long time ago. And so we feel like that standard, which was set in the 90s, I can't tell you when it was set exactly, except that it was before '93. Because that's all I could find, it said it was in '93. So I think it's time to call on into that. I mean, that's our feel, is that we really like to get that money out there and have there being even split. And it's based, I believe, on the, it was on the slide, but the slide went away. It's, I think, on the dollar amount, not the number of loans. Yeah, dollar amount.
Okay. All right. Counselor Vanda Bogart?
I have two questions. Any way we can predict with anything other than a wild guess, how much money's going to be involved in this program this, this year? The allocation from the feds?
At this point, we're told we were cut 5% in CDBG and I think we saw a larger cut in home. So we have less money this year. Christie has been working really hard on, I mean, she got us signed up for the Tax Intercept Program, so we've been getting some payments through that. She's taken a much more active effort to get repayments, to get more money back in. But essentially, we would, you know, only use 50% of it on rental as we see, you know, as what we see what we have right now. We do still, I think, have $11 in home. So we do have some money there. I just don't know what the total is. I can get it together and send, have Larry send it out to you, but.
Well, I realize it's a guess. We don't know what the allocations are going to end up being.
Yeah, we haven't had anything final from HUD on either.
The other question I have is, has there been any comment or reaction from the private lending sector to the city's efforts in real estate lending, such as they are?
All I can speak to is that the lending committee that's at NHS, where they also do similar-type lending products and bankers sit on those committees. And they've always been very supportive of both NHS and the city doing those. Because these aren't necessarily the people they're wanting to lend to.
Yeah, this is the, a different segment of the need.
Yeah. I mean, from our perspective, we think this is, this overall improves neighborhoods. So if the bank is out, the private bank is out there helping the people who aren't low-income and we help the people that are, together, we should be able to improve our neighborhoods overall. And, I mean, I think that helps the appraised values of the houses they do have loans on or they do have mortgages on. So, I mean, I think we all gain when we all kind of do our little piece of the puzzle in terms of neighborhoods.
Thank you.
And then I think the last, which, I don't know my slide, is just changing some references to titles. There's still, Commerce has went away. There's still references even in our city ordinances to Commerce, to COM, that we, so we would fix that. And then we would also like to decrease the application fee from 25 to 15 because we do find that when we have disabled or elderly clients, that 15, that $25 fee is a biggie for them. And so we would like to have the ability to lower that fee to 15. 25 isn't covering the cost of the program anyway. I mean, that's not the intent. The intent of the application fee was to, if you, if you give somebody an application for free or a service for free, it means nothing. So you want to charge them something so that it's worth a little to them. But for elderly and disabled people, 25 is often just a burden. And so that's why we would like the ability to do that. And that's what was added to your white sheet that I handed out to you that wasn't in the packet.
Counselor King-Tate?
A question about rent or owned. Would those loans be made to owners that have, for their existing properties or would it be for them to also acquire properties?
They could acquire properties and use our money to rehab them. I mean, they have that ability under our program. But my guess is that in most cases, they're going to rehab existing units they have. I don't know if Christie, if Terry, if they gave you a sense of where, what properties they would do, but.
They like both programs.
Okay. Because there's also what's called a construction loan program that isn't up here, just because we already have it and it's been on the books. It's not actively used, where you can actually, what, buy a property, rehab it, resell it?
We have a construction loan program where an investor can buy a property and borrow up to $25,000 to rehab that property. Payment is then deferred for a year and they have to sell that property to an owner occupant that meets the low-income standard. When we met with the landlords, they weren't taking, taking advantage of that program anymore for a couple of reasons. They didn't know it existed anymore. So we're going to breathe some new life into that program and try to get some more investors, you know, in, and interested in it. And then as far as the rental program, I think the question was, are they interested in the program? Is that what your question was? They, with the new changes, they said that they would be interested in it. If they could get smaller loans and have the equity bumped up a little bit, that loan-to-value bumped up, they think they could do a lot of good to their properties that they currently own.
One, one final question, I think, about renters. Do landlords, are landlords abiding by any more rigorous methodology or the manner in which they deal with their tenants? And when they have problem tenants, do they, do they read the book of the, do they read the law of the state of Wisconsin, which might be different than Bloay?
I really don't know the answer to that question. I hope so, since.
The question arises because I woke up this morning to NPR and the news was that landlords and property owner and brokers were making an effort to, I thought, some pretty draconian efforts to put all the, all the power in the landlords. It seemed to be a little draconian to me. It seemed to be a little draconian to me. We'll find out.
Yeah, I guess so.
All right, do you have any other questions or comments? Have you finished your presentation?
Yeah, and I did include Christie's name in the PowerPoint, because if anyone is interested, she is the person to call. That's where you start. She'll walk you through that process. She'll involve Bob McDonald, our construction specialist, as it is needed. They both do, you know, an excellent job, and Christie and Terry both worked really hard in coming up with this, and trying to come up with some ways to, you know, kind of breathe new life into the loan program, so I want to thank them for that. Christie has been with the city a very long time, and she knows this program backwards and forwards, and knows where, you know, there's been issues, and where she's had, you know, she knew she shouldn't make a loan, but the guideline said yes. And so we're trying to, she was taking that experience and coming up with ideas of how to streamline that, so that those loans won't be made. You know, because she could see the writing on the wall, that down the road, that it was going to be a foreclosure, and she couldn't do anything to, you know, the guideline said it was okay. So that's really what we're kind of attempting to do, at the same time, making more homeowners eligible who are capable of repaying, or at least a partial repayment. And then if it doesn't work, we'll be back here with some other ideas. Because we think this program is important in terms of, you know, it's just one tool in our toolbox, but it, you know, we can do the code side all day long, but you also have to have, you know, to have carrot stick, is what Steve Gregg always used to say. You can't have one or the other, you got to have both. And that, you know, he always believed that was very, very important, and so that's what we're trying to do here.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from counselors?
So the resolution is for approval of these changes. We would then amend the manual to include all these changes. It says Attachment A, but it really should say, I think it says Appendix A on the handout.
Okay, move, move by Loopkey, second by DeForest. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Item passes 7-0, and I think we've reached item 12 for adjournment. Moved by DeForest, second by Spritzer. All in favor of adjournment, say aye. Are there any opposed? We're adjourned.